Well, it's 6:02 and we have quite a bit of, quite a few items on the agenda. So I move that we open the joint meeting of the Board of Selectment and Board of Health. You vote on that?
No vote.
No, you can just go.
So, all right, so we're, we're in session. First item on the agenda is coronavirus update. Sounds like John and Tony and Anna may provide some update.
Yeah, so I can provide an update. So we've had no new cases in the past seven days, which is wonderful. In terms of our vaccination rates, in total for the town population, we're 73% fully vaccinated. In terms of our age ranges, the 12 to 15 year old population, 43% have had their first dose, but we're not far enough in for them to be fully vaccinated yet. The 16 to 19 year old population, 85% have completed their first dose and 71% are fully vaccinated. 20 to 29 years, 79% have completed their first vaccination and 70% are fully vaccinated. 30 to 49 year olds, 85% have completed their first and 74% are fully vaccinated. From 50 to 64 years, 91% have completed their first vaccination and 85% are fully vaccinated. 65 to 74 year olds are 95% fully vaccinated and 95% their first shot done. And then 75 and older, 95% have had their first shot and 85% are fully vaccinated at this point.
That's really, that's remarkable.
So what's the numbers? Sorry. 12 years, the youngest that are eligible?
Yes, for Pfizer, the 12 to 15 year olds can get Pfizer as of right now.
And is, do you know if there's a plan for kids younger than that or?
I know they're working on studying the vaccine and I believe Moderna will probably be the next one to come out for the younger age ranges of 12 to 15. And then I think, I would assume probably over the summer, we'll start seeing younger age ranges for Pfizer first and then Moderna second.
Sounds good.
So that's really great. Those numbers are awesome. We're getting, we'll get new numbers again tonight. So those are as of last week, we get them every Thursday evening. You know, to be 73% fully vaccinated and 80%, at least 80% with the first dose, we're cruising right along and we're doing, you know, compared to our, you know, we're, we're definitely ahead of the game compared to other communities. So that's, that's awesome. Thank you, Anna.
You're welcome. Lyn Tech is starting to wind down their hours and it's going to move to Lyn Community Health's main campus versus Lyn Tech probably in July is what it looks like. They'll run the clinic at Lyn Tech through the end of June as of right now is what I've been told.
Where is Community Health?
It's downtown Lyn by the train, by the train station.
Okay.
I'd like to add that.
And then June?
Supplementing the Lyn Center is the Lyn Public Health Department. They have a clinic and they will be conducting vaccinations as well. Their times are posted on the Lyn website.
It sounds like the state of emergency will be, is expected to be lifted June 15th.
Dan, do you have anything to add regarding the in-person, you know, committee meetings?
Yes, as of now, the open meeting law will revert back to its pre-COVID status on the 15th, but there are two bills pending, one for a permanent change and one for a temporary change. Of course, the temporary change was introduced by the governor not so long ago and that is with the Senate Ways and Means Committee. They were taking written testimony as of June 1st, but they have yet to issue any sort of finding or decision, so we're waiting on that. The permanent change is with the State Administrative and Regulatory Oversight Committee. They held a hearing on June 2nd. It's actually online, you can watch it. It's about a three hour event, some pretty compelling testimony from disabled folks championing the idea that they can participate by Zoom tells me that this will be a permanent change sometime soon. But at the end of the day, we're still waiting to hear back for anything official from the, that committee. But again, you can watch it online if you look for it under the State Administrative and Regulatory Oversight Committee Massachusetts, June 2nd was the hearing.
Is there any expectation, Dan, of like when they'll make a decision on that? Are they trying to do it ahead of June 15th or?
Well, there is an expectation, there's a hope, but there's nothing really concrete to give us that, that hope, to be quite frank. There's nothing out there just yet, but I'll keep you guys posted. So what that means for us is that any hearing to be noticed as of, was of already, needs to be in person and any meeting needed to be noticed as of the 13th needs to be noticed in person as of now.
All right. All right, so it looks like Gene's with us now, so that's nice. Hey, Gene?
I'm here. Hey, good evening.
You haven't missed much. Well, I shouldn't say that. You missed the coronavirus update, but that's pretty much it.
Great.
So if that's it for Corona, we can move on to opening comments. The compost area is open on Saturdays and Wednesdays from 9:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. 2021 hot resident stickers are required. And you can visit the hot.org for acceptable materials, but basically it's, you know, no plastic, grass, leaves, twigs, et cetera, nothing over eight inches in diameter and no tree stumps. Recycling dates for metal and white goods, TVs and computers is the last Saturday of each month, month from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. behind the DPW garage. Fees may apply. Checks only, no cash. Visit hot.org for more information on acceptable materials. Parking stickers, 2021 parking stickers are now available on the hot.org. The stickers are $10 each and all outstanding bills must be paid and a consensus completed before purchase. And from the looks of thing this past weekend, that those stickers are being enforced now, so. Water and sewer bills are due June 28th. If you have any questions, please call the treasurer or collector's office at the hot town hall. Any opening comments, Gene or Mark?
I think, I think I'll wait until our citizens fall. I, I do have a few things I want to talk about, but I'm hoping that a couple residents will be on at that point that can join me. So I'll wait till then, Josh.
All right, how about Eugene?
Yeah, I, I just got a call today and an email on the traffic up in front of the town hall going down to Wash Street. Complaint that there's a continuous speeding in that area and they're looking, the residents are looking for a 25 mile per hour sign up in that area. So I'm passing that along and hopefully we can do something to accommodate them.
Yep.
I'll, I'll, I'm sure we can get a 25 MPA sign installed. Say by the town hall.
Yeah, probably just before you hit Wash Street.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess just one more comment for me. It was a really hot weekend, maybe start of summer and around this weekend I was pleasantly surprised how calm everything was and the police seemed to have everything under control, so great job to them.
Police did a great job.
Yeah.
I heard a lot of compliments from over the weekend from a number of different folks about our police department and, and I know they, they wrote about 100 tickets and moved in additional cars. So I know they were working hard this weekend and I, I let the chief know that that was recognized and that I, I heard the comments, so, you know, they did a good job.
Yep. You know, they, they do a nice job balancing ticketing versus warning people and, you know, I know I was up at Canoe Beach and they gave people a warning, gave people a chance to move their cars, you know, before they just handed out tickets, so sort of.
Hey, in that, in that kind of weather, would it be worth having the, the police have a summer outfit? You know, Bermudas, shorts and, and t-shirts, something more than wearing a uniform in 90 degree weather?
I assume that would be up to the chief.
Well, I'm bringing it up. I think it's a good idea. Leave it up to the police.
Yeah. Yep, I agree. Any other opening comments before we move on to new business? All right, so new business, the first item is to approve Johnson School Field Day. Is there a motion?
I move that the board is likely to vote to approve the Johnson School Field Day event on Tuesday, June 15th, 2021, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Fox River Park area with a rain date of Thursday, June 17th, 2021.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Always a fun event. Any other discussion? All right, hearing has seemed done. Oh, go ahead.
It's just good to see the kids get together again outside and I think the, the focus, the focus on this year is going to be polka dots, I think. The kids have to wear something, something with polka dots. So, whatever.
I miss those days. All right, and, and I know they did file a COVID compliance guideline, safety regulations, so. Roll call vote?
Gene, can't he eye?
I'm watching on the night.
Josh, after my. The next item on the agenda is approve the waste management contract. We have a motion there.
I move that the Board of Selectment execute the solid waste and recyclable material collection, transportation and processing contract with Waste Management of Massachusetts, Inc., dated July 1, 2021, with a contract term ending July 1, 2026.
I'll second it.
All right, moving on to discussion. This is something that's been in the works for quite some time now. We've talked about it at a number of Board of Selectment meetings. Tony, do you want to walk us through some of the details here?
Sure, I had Ed Pacek on the phone on the call too. Ed's our rep from Waste Management and of course Dan Strip as well has been working, the three of us have been working together on this. They've been working over the last couple of weeks here finalizing the language of the contract. It's a five year, this is a five year contract, brings us from July 1 of '21 to June 30 of '26. It's, it, this contract is, it's pretty competitive compared to the rates that you see in other communities. Ed, Ed can speak to that. We have been dealing with the volatility of, of recycling, the recycling industry and the materials market. So last year we did a one-year deal to try to, I guess, coast our way through some of that, the changes that were occurring and then with the pandemic, the volume of recycled materials changed drastically. So we've been kind of trying to pin this down at the right time and I think we've hit it and, and, you know, we have, you know, a great partnership with Waste Management. You know, of course, this trash happens from time to time, it happens all the time, but, you know, they do a great job, their trucks are in great shape, their crews are, you know, bring a community personality, I think, when they're dealing with the residents in the street. And we're very pleased with their company. So Ed's on the call here and Ed, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, thanks for all your kind words. You know, we, we work hard to keep everybody in town happy and, and get the trash and recycling collected and, you know, I'd really just like to thank the town for a successful partnership. We've been going on six years now and it's been a real pleasure to work with so many good people in town and get to know so many good folks. And basically just say, you know, thank you for your business. We appreciate, you know, working with the town and we look forward to working, continuing to work with the town for the next five years. You know, one thing that Tony had mentioned is, you know, the competitiveness and also the, some of the, the recycling volatility. So I'd like to kind of speak about that for a minute and just say that, you know, things have really picked up in a way that's, it's a nice development. So I think, Tony, I haven't even brought you up to speed on some of the, the most recent development here, I just found out today, but the recycling markets continue to improve and I think that's going to position the town in this most current contract here to, to have a price that's, that's pretty much flat with the, this current year. So, I mean, I know that the current year was extremely competitive and I know that we're going to be able to offer the town a, a price that's going to be very similar. I, I just want to clarify that there is some volatility in that with the way the recycling is, is priced in there, but, you know, the way the market is, is looking right now, it's very positive. So the town stands to benefit from that feature within our contract where if the, the markets improve, the, the price for recycling continues to, to go down. So that's, that's something that I would like to, to point out there. I don't know, Tony, do you want me to, to talk a little bit about some of the other enhancements we have, like with carts and so forth?
Yeah, I think the board might have a couple of questions too, but if you can quickly, quickly hit some of those.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So, you know, one thing that we're, we're pretty excited about is the introduction of recycling carts to the town. You know, some really nice features about this, this, this program and it includes, you know, I guess on an aesthetic level, just a nice curb appeal when it comes to trash day. And, you know, instead of having as many bins and, and laundry baskets and, and boxes and all that sort of stuff out at the curb to, to contain everybody's recycling, there's a nice uniform look. It's a, it's a nice barrel that, that's on wheels, it's, it has a lid on it and it has a nice town seal that's hot stamped right on the side. So it's, it's a nice look. In addition to that, there's a, there's a functionality though that, that comes with it all. I think there's a convenience of just being able to wheel everything right to the curb, but then also, you know, you don't get the, the birds and the wind and, and, you know, rodents and everything spreading material around and, and, and creating that, that windblown litter and windblown bins, you know, and I know that happens in town, just giving the proximity to the ocean and all that. So, I mean, there's some nice functional enhancements that go with that. And then also just, I mean, on our end, we, we like it because it keeps the recycling dry. And, you know, that's a question that we get a lot oftentimes is, well, doesn't the recycling have to be kept dry? And the answer is, yeah, we, it, it really should be. And when you don't have a, a bin to contain it, it becomes, it becomes kind of an issue. So that's another thing that we're going to benefit from on our end is, is when we process the material, it's going to have, it's, it's going to be a little bit cleaner and, and more dry. So we, we like to see that. So it's, it's like a win-win for, for everybody there. And then finally, I would just say that, you know, making this transition to the carts on the recycling side sets the town up for, for the potential of some savings in the future. So, you know, we already have, I think, a very, very competitive contract with, with the town, but if we could move this to a fully automated program, the town could benefit from, from some even greater savings. And, and having these carts deployed throughout the town is a prerequisite to have, is a prerequisite before we could go with an automated system. So, you know, it's just sort of laying the groundwork and, and it keeps that, that possibility open. And our contract that we're, that we're contemplating right now also has that provision in there that we can make that switch without having to, not having to go through a whole nother contract process. So we're happy about that, that possibility in the future as well. So, yeah, I don't know if anybody has any questions on, on what I shared. It was kind of a mouthful, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I heard from, I heard from Lou today that we are going to be the first town with eco carts in the ocean blue color. We will be testing, we'll be the first test, the first town to receive those. So it's fitting for our town to go with that color, so that's good.
It is, and, and just to kind of let everybody know the significance of the eco cart, what the eco cart is, is it's actually, you know, as you know, the, the carts are made of plastic. Well, the eco cart is unique in that it actually uses the same type of plastic that residents would, would put in the car to recycle. It uses that type of plastic in the construction of the cart. I mentioned earlier that commodity markets are improving and that's causing a, a reduction in the, in the net cost to the town. This is the type of thing that we see happening in various industries and we're happy to, to partner with, with companies like Cascade who, who are able to offer this type of technology or, or this type of advancement where they're actually using that material. When companies use the recyclable material, what ends up happening is it, it drives the, the recycling markets in the right direction and then cities and towns get to save on, on their program. So it's, it's like, it's a full circle solution, so we're real, real excited about that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a few questions if I could. Ed, thanks for your, your presentation. I just do want to mention that, you know, our waste collection contract is exempt from the traditional chapter 30B procurement laws. That's why it's not being placed out the bid like normal contracts. The state law provides the town to bypass that. A couple of questions, Ed. One is, first, first one that comes to mind, are the old recycling bins recyclable?
It's a good, so here's, here's the thing when it comes to recycling. Many things are recyclable, but not, not all of them are recyclable in the curbside program. So one thing that we try to, to kind of coach and educate people on is the fact that, you know, we're looking for more like jars and, and bottles and, and, you know, kind of containers that people would use for, for food in, in a household settings, that kind of thing. Jugs for laundry detergent, that, that type of thing. So just because a lot of people's bins are, are plastic, doesn't mean that they're appropriate for, for recyclable in, in this curbside program. So one thing that Tony and I did talk about though was, you know, if people did want to dispose of their old bins, we would be able to collect those as part of the trash collection and they could just leave those out and, and mark them somehow that, you know, they're, they should be disposed of. So I mean, that way it at least get those out of people's hands if they don't, if they don't need them anymore. Of course, we would encourage everybody to reuse. Reusing is, is actually more, more commendable than recycling. So if there's applications that people have for their, for those receptacles at home, whether it's restoring of their items or, or anything like that, we would certainly encourage that.
And we're working on like a pamphlet that'll be actually hanging from the lid of the new barrel when it gets delivered to your home. And on that pamphlet, it'll say three things that you can do with your old bins. You can either A, reuse them, preferably reuse it maybe for yard waste or for trash. B, potentially we'll, we're going to work with Ed on, you know, marking them, like he said, like with an X for collection at curbside. Or C, we may do a, like a collection day at the DPW yard with a big dumpster. So we'll, we'll give people information with the new barrels on what they can do with their old barrels.
Great.
Hey, Tony, just in regard to the disposal, couldn't we get a sticker that says dispose?
Yeah, we could do whatever, just something that if you're going to put it out for curbside that Waste Management knows, recognizes it as something to collect. We don't, we obviously, you know, don't want them to take barrels that people aren't trying to throw away, so, yeah, we could do anything that is, makes it clear.
Just a sticker would be perfect.
Yep.
Sorry, Mark.
No problem, Gene. Ed, I did take a look at the contract today. I am somewhat familiar with it. And I talked to, to Tony about it and maybe you can fill in some of the gaps that went, went answered. Are you required, is Waste Management required to provide weight slips on a monthly basis or annual basis or quarterly basis?
We have all the records for all the weights and everything, so just, just to, yeah, so when we invoice the town on a monthly basis, we invoice for the collection service, but also for the tonnage that we collect trash and recycling. So that information is contained in the invoice already. But in addition to that, one thing that Tony and I have discussed for the future is, is basically a report that contains all the, all the tonnage on a monthly basis and then also any, any complaints or missed pickup reports that we receive in our call center that we could report that back to the town. We currently have all that information and we're, we're more than happy to provide it. It's just a matter of, you know, it being requested. So instead of making it like on a, on a per request basis, we're just going to make it every month now.
I think that would be helpful. Does that include, do you, is our waste brought to Resco in Saugus?
Yeah, all the solid waste goes there, correct.
And I know that they issue a sort of a, a tipping weight that, that Resco must issue too. And that, and that you have a report should correspond with those tipping weights, right?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, we could, we could provide all that if there's, if there's a, you know, if you need to see the weight slips or whatever backup you'd need, we can, we can do that.
I mean, I, I just think it's good, you know, to keep our records straight, so there's no question that we can have our tipping weights from Resco, Resco and what your weights are so that they match up. We know what we're paying for and, and whatever. So I think that would be useful. I, I also think it's useful that we keep a, a log of what the complaints are. There are, there is a liquidated damages provision in the contract, correct?
There is, yeah, it's appendix C, I believe.
Right. And, you know, hopefully we don't need to go there, but in the event that we do, you know, that information is going to be useful. By and large, I, I think that Waste Management does a, a great job. You have certain weeks, we have some issues, but I don't think we're ever going to avoid that. You know, as long as you can respond quickly, I think we can resolve those, those problems. But I think reporting that information on a monthly basis would be helpful.
Sure, we can do that, it's no problem. And I would just say this, you know, we're not perfect. We, we, we do our best, but we, you know, we're not perfect. When, when there is an issue, if, whether it's a resident or anybody needs to report something, I'd encourage them to call our call center. That would be the, the most efficient way to resolve anything. So if it's a matter of trying to get a truck back or to, to their location. And that would kind of keep the town out of the process and, and it would also just streamline it. So I know there's times when sometimes Tony gets a, a report or something and then Tony contacts me and then, and I got to contact somebody within our organization and, and obviously we do our best to respond to all that. But, you know, if, if it goes directly to our call center, it's going to cut down the response time, so that might, might help people.
When does your last truck on Friday leave the town?
Um, I, I think it, when, I, I don't have an exact time. I'm not, I'm not sure. I, I know it's sometime in the afternoon. Um, I mean, I, I would assume it's probably around, I, I, I don't want to assume, I don't want to give the wrong information, but, um, yeah, I don't, I don't know. I could find out though.
Yeah. Well, the only reason I ask Ed is, uh, you know, particularly with Friday pickups, if they miss something, uh, and we're in the middle of the summer and now the homeowner is stuck with, with the rubbish, um, through the weekend. Uh, so if we could work something out, whether or not, I know Tony, I know that you don't want to get DPW involved. Uh, the waste management has left town. They're not getting back, uh, to town. You know, to help the residents, um, you know, we just collect it maybe if we have to, uh, we bring it down to DPW, something along those lines.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I think that the first, like Ed said, first, first, uh, step would be to call a call center and try and get that ticket in because you may be able to catch them before they leave, um, town or maybe far away. Uh, uh, and then if it's, if it can't be resolved, then, uh, certainly the, you know, the town will step in and do the collection and bring it down to the DPW dumpsters.
Okay. One, one final question. Uh, maybe you could just enlighten us on bulk pieces, Ed. Uh, I've had several experiences where I called and got a number to pick up, um, uh, schedule to pick up bulk pieces. It's been very, very good. Uh, both times I used it, it worked perfectly. So maybe you can talk about that a little?
Yeah, sure. So I mean, right now, the way the, um, the program is set up for the solid waste collection is it includes the option for residents to put a bulk item. Um, I think it's, uh, set up for one item per week. And, um, what we ask is that residents just give us a call and, um, that's going to alert our driver that there's an item there, um, at that location ready to be collected. So, um, you know, that's, that's really the best way to handle that. And, um, if, if residents could do that, it will help, uh, ensure that everything gets collected as, as they wish.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So right now, uh, as far as homeowners, the only difference, you'll see with the new contract, um, is that we'll be using the, um, the carts on wheels versus the individual bins, right? Uh, there's no change to the trash, although you've built into the contract, uh, the possibility of going to standardize trash bins in the future, um, to permit automated pickup from the, from the trucks.
Mm-hmm.
That's all, that's all baked into the contract already, right?
Yeah.
But right now, the only change is the, is the recycling bins being the larger containers on wheels.
Yeah. And, and just one point, that's correct. And one point of clarification is that, um, while the contract is set to start on July 1st, the bins, uh, would be, uh, scheduled to arrive in, in early August unless, unless there's been any changes to that, Tony. Is that still right?
That's still the timing.
Okay.
How are we going to distribute them?
Uh, actually Cascade distributes them. So they come in on two big tractor trailers and then they distribute them. I probably, they'll probably take them a day or two and they drop them off at every house.
Really?
Yep. So we give them a list. We give them a list of all of our, um, accounts. Um, if there's, you know, if it's a two family, if it requires two bins or if it's a one and requires one. Um, and then
And that's in, that's in August?
That's going to happen in August. Right? That's what we're looking at right now.
Um, is there any more discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just to point out that, uh, Mr. Cullen had requested some tipping weight information on a monthly basis. Um, so your vote will be conditioned on, uh, Ed, Tony and I just adding that clause or some wordage to that effect.
Yeah. Okay. That, that's acceptable to us.
It shouldn't be a big, I'm looking at the, the section now. It's just a few words.
It used to, it used to be in the older contracts, Dan.
Okay. It'll be in this one too.
And Tony, can you, um, can you make a comment on the rates that people will be paying on a, on a per unit basis? Uh, this contract versus this past year?
I'll say that for next week because we don't know the new, the, the rates, uh, quite yet. That's why we're going to skip over it this week. Um, some of those rates are going to be adjusted based on the latest, um, that Ed was talking about earlier. Uh, they shouldn't see much of an increase compared to the rates that we had last year in place, if, if any. Um, with the, with the cost of this contract being a flat, uh, almost a flat increase as Ed had mentioned, which by the way, you know, we, um, select and Colin had mentioned, it's not, uh, required to go out to bid. Uh, last year's, if this, if, if these numbers end up being similar to last year's numbers, we presented those last year and stated that the last time the town went out to bid and waste management had won that bid, the numbers that waste management were providing last year were still better than the closest, the second closest bidder from five years previous. So if we're still flat, we're still doing better than the bids we received almost six years ago now. So is that about, is that right, Ed?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Yeah. That's, that's my, my recollection, um, uh, precisely as far as the comparison of, of last year's contract with the prior bids. And then, um, you know, we're pretty flat this year. So that's, that's exactly how I'd look at that.
Oh, uh, when it comes to, uh, per bill, uh, number, we, last year, we changed the structure of how we did that. Um, and we're going to continue with that structure, but I think, I don't, I, I, let me talk about it next week. I think we're going to be about at the same, the same rate. Maybe a small increase. We'll, I'll, I'll, I'll let you know next week.
All right. Any, any further discussion on the topic? Um, hearing and seeing none, we can, uh, vote on the motion, um, conditional upon waste management providing the monthly tipping weight numbers. Roll call vote?
Gene, Kathy, I.
Mark, Colin, I.
Josh, Ed, remind. Uh, the next item on the agenda, what? What's that, Mark?
I just said thank you to Ed.
Oh, yeah. Thanks for, uh, thanks for coming in.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Uh, the next item is, uh, vote to approve sale of bonds in signed associated paperwork. Um, I'll make the motion. I move that the board of selectmen approve the votes as written and incorporated such votes into the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Let me share my screen.
Second.
Let me, uh.
Okay. Thanks, G.
So, uh, quite a lengthy motion, um, many votes involved in this one. Uh, Allison is, Allison is on as well. Uh, Allison, are you unmuted?
I am now.
All right. Hi.
Hi.
Tony, can you, uh, can you zoom a little bit? My laptop screen's not that big. That's good for me.
So I'll just scroll.
That's real good.
Um, so, uh, why do you, uh, you've moved now to, uh, vote as, you know, in favor as written. Um, what I'm showing you here is the as written part. So these, all of these, uh, motions, individual motions are approving the sale of bonds, um, and authorizing the treasure collector to, um, execute and deliver, uh, certain rules associated with that. Uh, and this is, this is all the language here, um, that I'm scrolling through. And Allison's on the, on the phone because I know this can get a bit technical, um, but it is an annual procedure. So all of these bombs are, um, where these borrowings have been authorized by town meeting, town meeting vote, um, or through the, you know, through our municipal monetization act authorizations or things of that nature. So Allison, could you speak a little bit, uh, a little bit more in detail about these, um, bonds?
Yeah. So they're actually not bonds. They're bands, which are, it's short-term borrowing. Um, so the town usually borrows, um, for one year at a time. Um, that's kind of been, uh, how the town has approached its borrowing. And what that does is it saves the town on long-term interest costs. Um, and it's been pretty effective. So we have bands that are come, coming due, um, June 25th. So that's what the series A ban is. It's to renew those, there's three of them. And then the series B is for bands that are coming due on July 8th and it's to renew those for another year. In each of those series, there are some bands that we're paying down. Um, I put together a quick spreadsheet to show Tony today. We're paying down about 730,000 in bands in June and July. And so those are for projects that are already completed and it'll basically help get that debt off of our books. Um, but the others are ongoing. Um, so again, these are all for authorizations from prior town meetings and it's for a number of projects. Um, I can answer more specific questions. We got, um, for the series A ba, uh, bands, we received five bids. Um, for the series B, we received four bids. Um, both were very competitive. We got a 1% coupon rate for each, which is very good. It's basically a net interest cost of less than a half percent. Um, so we fared very well, um, in the issue yesterday.
Allison, I, I've got a couple of questions. Um, um, some of these bonds, uh, some of these bonds, you know, the, the, the lower the amount, um, we may carry short-term for a while and end up paying them off before we need to go long-term. But clearly there are some that we're not, we'll, we'll definitely go long-term at some point. Um, and I'm wondering, you know, given the interest rates for some of those long-term, you know, the, some of the higher amount bonds that we know are going to be going long-term at some point.
Mm-hmm.
Does it make sense to go, you know, to go long-term now, to, to go now, uh, you know, because the interest rates are so low? Um, hoping that interest rates don't get to increase in the coming years? I mean, just your thoughts on that?
Yeah. I mean, I've seen it both ways and it is a discussion that I've had with Hilltop Securities. That's the town financial advisor. Um, I think for maybe some of the larger bands, that might be something that we want to do. For instance, the sewer and something that we haven't fully spent yet. Um, because you don't want to bond long-term until you've have fully spent those funds. So I could see considering that for the sewer next year when we do this. Um, but other than that, I think because we've been paying down the bands, um, pretty quickly, I think that the way that the town is going about doing this, um, has been the most, uh, cost effective.
I agree. I, I, I agree completely. Um, maybe next year we take a look at those, um, particularly the sewer bond. And that's the one I was focusing on.
Yeah.
We're going to, we're going to be long-term. We're going to be long-term soon anyway. So we might as well, you know, take advantage of the low interest rates currently. Um, they're not going to get much lower, I don't think.
Right. And the other thing we could consider is, so this ban issue does not include, um, any of the new authorizations from this past town meeting. There wasn't enough time since town meeting in May to get all of the bond council legal requirements. So we'll likely have another issue sometime later this fiscal year. So we may even want to look at it then too. Um, and I can certainly run through scenarios with Hilltop Securities.
Makes sense. Thank you, Allison.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Tony, can we vote on this, um, as presented?
It's something we had in 2019 and, uh, and in 2020, I think as well. So, uh, I'm comfortable with that. And that's the motion that Josh has read so far.
Yeah. Okay.
And, um, uh, I'm going to need you to sign this document, um, this, within the next week.
And there will be additional documents coming next week as well that everyone will have to sign. Usually like a stack about yea high.
Yeah. I asked this before, Tony. Um, I'm, I'm in town all the time anyway. So I always run up and sign things. But Allison, can they, you accept electronic signatures on these things?
Um, that's a good question. On these documents, I do not think so. Um, bond council is pretty stringent on that. I have used electronic signatures for a number of other things, but I don't think you can for this.
Okay.
I agree with you. The Electronic Signatures Act doesn't apply to everything. And if it's going to make some exceptions, it's going to definitely be something like this that would require a wet signature.
Yeah. Bond council is pretty strict.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any other discussion?
I agree, I agree with Mark's assessment. And Tony and I were talking briefly today about taking advantage of the lower interest rates.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thanks for working it out. So we'll get in, into town hall over the next day or two and get all these signed off.
So we don't have the documents yet.
Oh, okay.
Actually wait till next week. I think it's the 15th or, we'll have them, we'll let you know when they come in and sign them.
All right. Um, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote?
Gene, Kathy, I.
Mark, Colin, I.
Josh, Ed, remind. Uh, the next item is to vote to approve the FY 22 water sewer and trash rates. Do we have a motion?
I moved that the board of select
Hi, Dean.
I moved that the board of selectmen vote to approve the fiscal year 22 water rate of $9.92 and the fiscal year 22 sewer rate of $14.08.
Second it. Uh, any discussion?
You can speak to us a little bit, Allison and I, if you'd like.
Yeah, please do.
Um, water rate, not seeing a, a tremendous increase compared to last year. Our, uh, projected rate last year, uh, for 100 cubic feet was $9.37. Uh, this year being $9.92. Uh, we actually fared pretty well. A lot of that was because of a lot of the, um, the, we, we fixed a lot of leaks this past year. So that helped us. And, and I don't know if you recall, a few months back when we were developing our budget, me showing the rates compared to other MWRA communities. And we're, we're pretty, we were, we were on the lower end of increases compared to last year. So water's not bad. Sewer, sewer's high. Sewer, you know, we had, our rate was $11.99 and we're going up to 1408. So this is a, this is a product of, um, windwater sewer increases, uh, their assessment, you know, they've told us we're going up, you know, potentially 50% over the next year. And, um, a lot of that's due to the, the closure of Gorillak Farms, the chain, the, um, the new, uh, O and M contract, uh, operating maintenance contract that they're going out to bid for and a lot of capital improvements that they are either, um, required to do from an administrative consent order or doing in order to get a better bid on their O and M contract. or doing in order to get a better bid on their O and M contracts. Uh, so this is something that we've been expecting. Um, and we are, you know, our, the, the, we're, we're looking at, um, this summer, we will be looking at, uh, potentially a restructuring of how we, instead of having one rate for everyone, uh, potentially having a tiered rate structure, um, based on usage. Uh, so further incentivizing conservation of, of water. Um, but this is, um, we haven't, we haven't gone through that process yet.
Um, Tony, I've got a question for, uh, either you or Allison, um, particularly on the sewer rate. Uh, as you know, we have a debt exclusion in the, uh, uh, water sewer. So the capital costs in Lynn, are they excluded, Allison? Why wouldn't they be?
They're part of.
Sorry, because it's part of our assessment.
Yeah.
It's included as part of the assessment from Lynn Water Sewer. So they are, it's part of our contract with them. So it, it's not, um, a debt exclusion.
But it is a debt.
Yeah, but it's incorporated as part of their assessment. Um, so it's not, it's a charge that they're passing on to us, I guess, is to look at it.
Okay.
So the capital improvements planned, oh, go ahead, Allison, sorry.
Yeah, I, you know, I've never considered it before. Um, it's maybe something we could look at. I, I don't know too much about the capital program in Lynn Water Sewer either, so.
Yeah, so my understanding is, Tony, correct me if I'm wrong. So Lynn Waters do a five-year capital plan, uh, basically upgrading the plant. Um, and they, um, distribute those to possibly the communities that participate, um, a percentage basis. Uh, I'm just wondering why that, why that portion couldn't be considered under our debt exclusion. Uh, it might be something we want to look into.
Okay. Um, it is also, you know, in terms of the amount, it's like for what we appropriate, it looks like for FY22, the amount for the capital part is about $50,000. So, um, the assessment piece is what's really driving up the actual sewer rate. But yeah, I think it's something we should look at.
But I think what, what Mark's talking about is, is the capital costs at Lynn Water Sewer. So it might now be lumped into our assessment.
Assessment.
That's what I'm saying, exactly.
And we're not seeing that capital improvement, those capital improvement costs yet? Is that a true statement? In other words, they haven't made those capital improvements yet?
I think they're in the process of doing them now. And I think that's, we're starting to see, that's part of the increase in our assessment that we're starting to see, is that cost being passed down to the communities.
Right. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, what they do, they'll do a five-year plan and they'll go out, they'll go out and flow the bond for that capital improvement. Uh, and the principal interest payments on that bond will be distributed among the communities. And my question to Allison, uh, and Tony was, because Nahat has a debt exclusion on our, um, on our water sewer, following, um, wouldn't that apply to that? And I think it's worth looking into. It's not a lot of money right now, but it's something.
I think. I too, it is like the way, is, is what I'm thinking is, we could, we could potentially ask for a breakdown of the assessment that we receive. How much of that is capital costs, right? And then potentially ship that and raise it on the tax levy.
Right.
Um.
Now, the, you know, the only difference is, I mean, Nahat's going to pay one way or the other. It's either going to pay through its real estate taxes or it's going to pay through its water and sewer rates. Uh, personally, I'd rather pay through my real estate taxes because I can write that off than my federal income tax. I can't write off my water sewer rate.
But you're also, you're also, in the last couple of years, your write-off cap has decreased, right? So most people are hitting that anyway. So the benefit of that has kind of, um, decreased a bit. And you're not capturing properties in town, some of which that are larger in nature, um, that don't pay property taxes.
Exactly.
So there's like that back and forth. That's some of the, that's one of the things we're going to try to take a look at. Um, in this summer, when we're talking about how we structure our sewer rates. Um, so, you know, we don't, even with the current, the, the current debt shift, we don't have to shift all of our debt costs. We can pick, you know, we can shift some. We, it's up, it's, it's up to the board of selectmen. Uh, so it's not a must, but it's, um, we do have the authority to do it. So we, I wonder if we could, we could potentially explore that mark and shift it over. Um.
Okay.
What I was going to say.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I was just also going to say that on top of the five-year, the typical process that you mentioned, because their operating maintenance contract was ending this year, the 30-year contract with, um, I forget the name of the company, but at the end of that contract, they come in, they do a full assessment of the, of the current, um, of the facility and, and pinpoint items that needed to be repaired or would benefit a future bid on the future O and M contract if invested in. So on top of their five-year, they had that process happening. And just the new contract and the increase in costs associated with that from a 30 years later, contributing to this assessment as well. So, uh, some of it was capital that, you know, they were doing to try to get a better price. Uh, but prices are still really going up. And then plus on top of that, they're under an administrative consent order as well. So some of the capital costs were, are required. Um, so a number of things factoring into those, to those, to that increase.
So wha- what I'm wondering is, um, this increase is whatever it is, 30 or 40% over last year. And maybe the, maybe the bonds have been taken already for the capital improvement, but it sounds like maybe the O and M contract is not yet reflected there. So what I'm wondering is, you know, is this the tip of the iceberg? Or is this, you know, half of the increase we're going to see over the next couple of years? Is there a way to predict this?
Well, not more, I think, once the new contract is signed and what that cost is going to be. Um, I lean towards, uh, I think, I think this is more like the tip of the iceberg. I think we're going to be continuing to see increases. And the best, the best thing we can do, you know, this is, it's a volume, it's a volume unit, it's a volume-based unit, right? So the best we can, some things that we could do to help reduce that cost is improve our II, promote water conservation, you know, things of that nature.
Yeah, so just, you know, to remind people, obviously, we don't have meters on our sewer. We have meters on our water consumption. So you save on your water consumption, you save on your, your sewer. Um, just to touch upon the point Mark made about whether the extra cost should go into real estate tax, um, or in, in the, in, onto the water and sewer. As Tony pointed out, not everybody pays real estate tax. So, um, we have to be careful with that and, um, debt transfers as well to make sure everyone's paying their fair share.
Yeah, it's a mixed bag, Josh, for sure. The only other thing Tony and I, we've talked about a lot is make sure that whatever capital improvements Lynn is making and passing off to the other communities are actually our costs. Um, I mean, if they're doing I, I stuff in Lynn that specifically addressed the Lynn, um, not affecting Swambskut or Sargus on the heart, then we shouldn't be paying for that. Um, and just make sure, and that, that had happened in the past. Um, that the time when I first came on, the town was paying, um, not only in the heart, but Sargus and Swambskut were paying for capital costs that were not the result of anything either of those communities were doing. And, and it, it created a big adjustment in our rates. So I'm not saying that's happening now, um, but it's something to be, to be watchful of.
Definitely.
How do you police that, Mark?
Well, they have to, they have to have a, uh, as Tony said, they'll have a complete capital plan. Um, and all of the improvements in their capital plan. And one of the things that Tony and I, uh, talked about was the hiring for Sargus Nahat and, uh, Swambskut to hire our own engineer, uh, to go through that capital plan to make sure that those costs, uh, that are being passed on to us are ours.
Yeah, that, that sounds like a good idea because, you know, as you spoke about, you know, how to make sure those capital costs are applicable to, to Nahat and Swambskut. And so that's immediately what I thought, well, how do we, how do we scrutinize this to make sure we're, um, that sounds like a good idea to, to sort of share the cost of some, an expert to review all those.
Right. And I'm sure Swambskut and Sargus would join in with us.
So in the meantime, we have a motion in front of us. Um, is there any more discussion? A hearing and seeing none, roll call vote.
Gene, Kathy, aye.
I call a nay.
Josh, Andrew, aye. Um, the next item is to vote to approve the FY22 trash rate in elderly exemption. Is there a motion?
So postpone that one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you told me that already. Sorry. Um, we're also not going to do the fee schedule, right?
So fee schedule, uh, we do every, every year before July 1st. Uh, we have sent it out to our department heads to ask for any updates that are necessary. Um, we, because of COVID last year, we, we, the only thing we changed in the fee schedule was the water sewer and trash rates. All other fees stayed flat. Um, and, and I anticipate that to be the same this year. Uh, but this is also another item that, you know, I think that this year heading in, you know, we should think about a, you know, working with the finance committee to study our current fee schedule and compare that to our neighboring towns and potentially propose some, some changes for a future fiscal year. But I think that, that requires a public process and plenty of lead time and notice to our residents. Um, you know, we may not be talking about significant increases, but, um, you know, I, I, I'm not sure where we stand as far as how we compare to our neighboring towns on certain fees. So, um, we, you know, we're not talking about anything drastic for this upcoming year, but we may want to think about starting the process of really digging into the weeds of our schedule and, and maybe, you know, preparing for a, a, a freshening up of, of those fees for the following fiscal year.
Absolutely.
Yep. So after you hear back from the department heads, will we want to reconvene for a quick vote on this? Or can we proceed until the July meeting?
I think. I think, I think, uh, we're going to be meeting again before July. Uh, we have a couple of different things that we're going to have to get in front of you guys. So, um, we can, we can, uh, I just wanted to bring it up to your attention tonight and we'll have it on the agenda for the next one.
Okay, sounds good. So the next item on the agenda is FY22 appointments for review and votes. Uh, we have only one appointment this year, treasurer or collector. Um, is there a motion on this?
All right, Gene.
I moved that, I moved that the board of selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Brendan Curry. Have I got that right?
Correct.
Correct. As the treasurer collector for fiscal year 22.
Seconded.
Uh, any discussion? Um, this is something that happens every year. I can read this, um, term of office statement. Is value on that?
Um, I think, no, you don't have to. It's our, the, the, uh, the town charter. Um, the only position in there that requires an annual vote is the town treasurer and collector. Uh, so, uh, short of a charter change, we have to take this vote every year.
Yep. Um, is there any discussion?
Uh, Brendan does a great job.
Yeah.
He does a great job. We're very lucky to have him. Um, and he's, he's a great, great part of the team. He's developed, you know, he's been treasurer collector now. I think this is going to be his third year. Uh, and he's, you know, coming right along. He does a great job.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I really am more, I enjoy working with Brendan. I think he adds a lot of value to that office. He's great with the public, um, very calm, cool and collected. Um, and I've just really enjoyed working with him over the past few months.
Yeah, thanks for that. I, I, you know, I don't have the insights into the, you know, his daily working, but, you know, certainly when I come into the town hall, he's, you know, always a pleasure to deal with. So as a taxpayer, I certainly appreciate that. So, um, roll call vote.
Gene, Kathy, aye.
I call a nay.
Josh, Andrew, aye. All right, so hopefully we get to keep Brendan for another year. Um, there's a vacant seat on the board of assessors. Uh, so this is really an announcement, uh, there's a vacant seat on the board of assessors. Please send letters of interest in your resume to kristentaylor@ktaylor@nahat.org. So K T A Y L O R at nahat.org. Um, this is an elected position, so this would be anticipation of a, uh, an appointment until next April's, uh, vote, I assume. Is that, is that correct, Tony?
That's correct. Uh, so the plan right now is that we would do a town meeting with the board of assessors on July 14th. Uh, so we're asking, uh, for people to get their letters of interest, uh, in as soon as possible. Uh, as we get them, we will send them out to you and the assessors to, you know, interview the folks that are interested. And also just mention that this is the seat of the late Perry Barasso. Uh, so it's an important one and, um, we're looking forward to getting, to interviewing some qualified candidates.
Hey, Josh, can I back up one? Why is the treasurer collector appointed every year, reappointed every year or appointed every year? Why is that not a full-time position?
It's our town charter, Gene. Our town charter, uh, it's the only position in the charter that, uh, says that the town treasurer and collector, uh, is appointed by the board of selectmen for a term of one year.
At one time, that was an elected, uh, position, a while, you know, quite a while back, but, um.
It just seems uncomfortable to be in the one, it, it just seems uncomfortable to be in a one-year position for somebody as opposed to having a full-time position based on performance.
Yeah, I definitely under, I understand what you mean. It's, it, it probably feels a little strange for someone, you know, a young man, young woman trying to build a career. I mean, I think the risk of us not voting him, you know, is, is low, but, um, it is a little odd. I agree.
But it's there, it's, it's, it cannot be changed, Tony?
Uh, it can be changed by a special act or through, uh, charter. Uh, you know, you can either just change it through a special act or you can do a charter commission to.
I think that would require a charter commission. Um, if we're going to take that from an elected position to appointed, I'm sorry, appointed to elected.
No, I think you're saying, I think you're saying, can we change the term, the appointment term? Uh, so still leave it appointed, but change it to, you know, multiple years.
I still think.
No, 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 I'm not. I'm saying change it to a full-time position.
Not an appointment, but a hire, you're saying, like a standard?
A hire.
Yeah, it might require, it, it might require a charter commission.
Well, it's something to think about, I think.
Yeah, I think when we're talking about charter commission changes, uh, you know, let's take a look at the, the whole thing. Um, it's, you know, there, there were a lot of changes that need to be made to that charter, charter that I can think of, and I'm sure you can, Tony and Dan. I'm sure you can, um. So, uh, maybe, um, in the near future, we can uh, take a look at appointing a commission to, uh, to review our charter and to report back, um, with some recommendations.
Great idea.
We'll leave. I'll have to double check. I remember looking into this a couple of years ago. The members of a charter commission, I believe, are elected, so you have to create the commission, then you have to hold an election. It's not a, it's, it's not a, a, a quick process.
Not at all, Tony. It's, it's a lengthy process deliberately.
Yeah. It's a two-year process and requires, what, a two-thirds vote on anything that's changed. It's, it's not easy, but. So it has to be deliberate and well thought out.
Yeah.
Yeah. I feel like this came up a couple of years. Not on the specific issue necessarily, but some other change.
Yeah.
No, I think, I think Mark is correct. We need to look at it. If it takes two years, it's two years. I mean, let's go forward with something and if in the middle it doesn't look like it's something we want to continue with, then we should back off of it, but I, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
So. Uh, well, let's just revisit that. Um, I'll, I'll speak to you two and we'll revisit that. And we were speaking about the Board of Assessors, so it's our, part of our bylaws requires a joint vote of the members of the assessors and the Board of Selectmen. Uh, so if anyone's interested in being appointed to the Board of Assessors uh, from now, from now until, uh, Election Day of next year in April, please send your letter of interest to kristentaylor@nahat.org. As soon as possible, um, we will be, we, we will be voting on that July fourteenth.
So, um, if we're voting on the fourteenth, we want to set at least tentative deadline of, uh, uh, let's say the twelfth, which would be Monday, maybe, just to get our ducks in a row.
Uh, let's do. Let's do Friday the ninth.
Sounds good. So get your, uh, letters of. And resume in by July ninth. Hopefully we, you know, recently we've been having, um, good luck filling these vacancies where we've had, you know, more volunteers than, than slots, so hopefully we continue with that positive trend. Uh, the next item on the agenda is Nahat Fire Department, Fire Chief. Um, the Nahat Fire Department is now accepting applications and resumes for Fire Chief. The job description and job posting is on nahat.org. Please send a cover letter and resume to kristentaylor@ktaylor@nahat.org. K T A Y L O R at nahat.org.
What, what is Gene Palogo's effective termination, resignation date?
He is retiring on the thirtieth. His last shift is the twenty-eighth.
This month?
Yeah.
Um, another, um, announcement is for the Assistant Town Accountant. Um, we're now accepting applications for Assistant Town Accountant. The job description and job posting are on nahat.org. Send letters of interest and resumes to A N I E T O at, uh, at nahat.org. That's Allison. So A N I E T O at nahat.org.
Both of those, both of those don't have deadlines. Uh, as we receive, um, qualified applications, we will be scheduling interviews. And the, both positions are open until, open until fill.
Is the Assistant Town Accountant, that's a forty-hour a week position? Is that right?
Thirty-seven and a half.
Thirty-seven and a half.
Yep.
All right, um, ongoing business, vote to approve and sign town administrator's contract. Do you have a motion on this?
I'll make the motion to sign the contract, Town Administrator.
All right. Um, there's a little more detail on the, uh, on your.
You know what? I didn't have that in front of me. I'm sorry.
I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve and sign the town administrator's contract with a starting term July first, two thousand twenty-one to July one, two thousand twenty-four.
Second that. All right, um, any discussion?
Uh, I just wanted to add, we've been going, um, the board has been in executive session, um, the last couple of months regarding this. Um, we have developed a set of goals and objectives for the Town Administrator, um, that, uh, we all agree on. The contract that, uh, that we are about to approve is really, um, um, set up so that we encourage, uh, the Town Administrator to stay, stay with us longer, um, if possible. And, um, I, I support this contract.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. Um, you know, as you mentioned, Mark, we've been working on this for several months now and, uh, with a huge bit of help from Dan Scrip, so thanks, Dan, for all that coordination. Uh, we can't, um, as you all know, we can't meet, um, outside of, um, session, whether it's open or executive session, so, uh, Dan's done a great job coordinating with Tony and, and amongst the three of us to come up with, I think, um, a good contract that, uh, we're, we're uh, really happy that, hoping that Tony will sign this contract and we'll have him for another three years, so. Um, I think it's a, a, a good contract for, for Tony and, uh, at the same time respectful of the town's budget, so.
Hey, and I'd, I'd also like to say thanks to Tony for making this process that much easier for us to work through. Thank you, Tony.
Yeah, that's a good point, Gene. Tony has been very, very cooperative for all this. Um, through this whole process, you know, hammering out some of these details, so. Good job all around, I think.
I thank you guys. I thank the board. I thank Dan for his help. I thank the board. I thank, you know, our team. I love what I do. I love who I work for. I love our team. Um, I'm ex, I'm truly grateful and ecstatic to have the opportunity to sign another three-year contract for, you know, the town that, um, has molded me as a person and um, as, and now as a professional and, and I'm, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm thrilled to have the opportunity, so. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so, um, we.
Can I, can I sneak something in?
Of course.
We, uh, looking at the Monday edition of the item, June seventh. And on the front page, there's a report on air noise over Swanscott. And just for the purposes of looking down the road on this, one paragraph says, according to Stein, who's the Massachusetts Port Authority, Logan is considering shifting flight paths of approaching planes slightly north, I think they meant south, so that they travel over the Nahat causeway instead of Swanscott. I think that we need to take a, is, is, is our abatement committee in full force right now?
Mr. Chairman, I think maybe we should finish our vote on this and then we can talk about that, maybe?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did, did we not finish?
Well, I think we just need to, um, get into town hall to sign. Well, uh, let's see, are we voting on this?
Yeah, we haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted yet.
Yes, yes, we are voting. So any, any further discussion on Tony's, uh, Town Administrator's contract? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote?
Gene Canty, aye.
Rock, aye, aye.
Josh Antromay. So, um, we'll get into town hall to sign.
Thank you.
Assume that's the procedure. Um, all right, um, let's go back to your, um, your, your concern, Gene, about the, uh, flight path.
But Dan, you, you informed us or gave us some information on this probably four or five months ago.
That's right.
Something. Go ahead.
Did you say the planes are approaching, uh, over Nahat or did you say departing? I missed that word.
Coming, coming and going.
Okay, well, those are two different, those are, I mean, not to be facetious, but they're two different things and the planes follow two different patterns when they do those sorts of things. Um, there is a action committee that works with the state and federal aviation authorities that is already looking into this. And they're specifying what they call RNAF two-two left, which is a particular route planes take to land at Logan. And that particular change would divert, not, well, divert's a bad word, but, but, but would alter the current path, which is basically straight over Salem, uh, Salem, uh, Lynn, Swanscott, right down into the runway versus, as you mentioned, uh, coming across the causeway and then sort of banking, making a left dogleg into the final approach, two, two, two left. But as you probably can tell, I, I look out my window and that will now the departing, but uh, when they, when they're coming in on that runway, they do it already. They're already sort of testing it out, if you will, so. Uh, it's already taking place. And like I said, there. What's that?
Go ahead.
There is that committee, our, currently we, the town has no representation in that committee. Bob D'Amico was our longtime representative and he stepped down after a bunch of years, so that is open for some folks if they want to jump on it. I spoke to someone from Little Nahat that seemed interested. I never heard from him after town meeting. So there is that happening and that's an ongoing current committee that I think has another meeting coming up sometime soon.
Well, when we, when we last had this discussion, you, you had shown us the pattern and the pattern was the planes would be coming from the north and as soon as they got to Little Nahat, they would bank right and then left.
That, that RNAV approach involved flights, um, not over Little Nahat, I mean, close to Little Nahat, but didn't go over Little Nahat on that path. Now, there are some planes that approach over Little Nahat and they're, they're not following that particular RNAV. They're what they call flying VFR, just looking out the window essentially and eyeballing the runway, so to speak. It's a little simplistic, but that's what they're doing. Like today, uh, you'll have a lot of planes coming over Little Nahat, but not the big ones, not the really big loud ones, what they call the heavies, at three hundred pounds and pounds and more. They'll follow that path every time. And now there are some complaints from Little Nahat folks that say, well, I see these planes going directly over Nahat and I have yet to see that on an, on approach. I've seen it on the departure, but not on approach.
I've seen, I, I see it on approach often.
Well, if they're not, if the, 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 you know, the regional jets and Cape Air with their three oh twos, yeah, they'll come over Little Nahat quite a bit, but not the big ones. The big ones will follow that path pretty, I mean, that's a pretty precise path that they follow.
It is.
Yeah.
It's just something I thought we should be watching.
Well, no, you're absolutely right. And, and you should encourage someone to step up and join that committee. It's all, as, as far as I've been seeing, it's all sort of by telephone, by Zoom. That might change.
So, um, Bob reached out to me the other day saying that he actually feels like he could still remain a, a member of the Noise Abatement Committee. Um, and I meant to reach back out to him to see if, uh, how he felt about getting back on as our representative on the committee that we were talking about there, Dan. Um, so I do want to speak with him, but if, uh, if we need more, we need someone else, we're definitely going to put that out there. Gene, we've been watching this very close, uh, I'm sorry, Selectmen Candy, we've been watching this very closely. Uh, Dan's been joining a lot of the committee meetings that, um, have been occurring at the state level. Uh, they are. What we discovered really was that there's, it's still going to be some time before they implement this change. They're going through this test process. We've, we are on their, um, radar, so to speak, not to use that, um, as a pun, but, um, as far as expecting commentary from us on behalf of Nahat residents as well as from, um, elected officials representing us. So we're definitely keeping a close eye on it. And.
Yeah, and, and you're right, it does say that this whole process is a year out.
Yeah, it's quite some time.
It, we should, we should definitely get, you know, somebody from Nahat on that committee. Um, I know in the earlier conversations, I, I think Rick Scortis was one person who, um, was at least interested in the process. It is a tough situation because, uh, you know, this new flight path kind of relieves a lot of Swanscott and other areas north of there from this flight path. So it's, it's a tough situation for Nahat.
It is.
Yeah.
It most, a lot of it's environmental justice communities. Um, it's, it's Salem, Denver, Swanscott, Lynn, Revere, um, that's the path that they're currently on, so. It is a tough, it is a tough spot for us, but, um, we're, we're, we're going to, we're going to, it, it may not be, we may be able to push them a little bit for, for, uh, a little bit more north on the causeway, so it's not as close to Nahat. And this new, these new, the new technology that Dan knows a lot about, um, actually keeps them closer to their, to their flight path than, uh, you know, years, years in the past, so. It may not be as bad as, as we expect if you think, if you're comparing it to, you know, uh, what's occurred in the past, but we're still obviously want to be represented and we want our opinions taken into account.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the, the precise flight path will help and, uh, you know, even if we can push them just a little bit north um, on the causeway, that would help a lot because, you know, you really hear it, you know, when you're on that, that, particularly that, like, facing side of Little Nahat, I'm sure it will be unpleasant, you know, along Wilson Road. So anyway, let's get someone on the committee and see how much leverage we can.
How about you, Dan?
What's that? Yeah, let's go, let's do it. Jump, I'll jump in a cockpit and we'll fly it together.
Dan has a, Dan's a perfect guy for us, uh, on this issue because he, he has, uh, that's his side, that's his, uh, his side hobby or interest in flying planes and so. You know, usually I'm like, I hear, I hear a plane go over town. I call Dan, I'm like, what plane was that? And he looks it up on an, on an app. He knows exactly like, you know, what type of plane, when it came in, how big it was, whether it should have been there or not, um, he knows what he, he knows it very well, so.
And we saw an Airbus pass over the, uh, causeway about four minutes ago on its way to LAX. There it is. Still see it right there. Touch it.
So. All right.
All right, the next, um, next item on the agenda is preserving East Point. Um, I can provide a quick update. Um, at our last meeting, we, we uh, we exchanged letters with Northeastern about, um, having a meeting to, uh, um, get a discussion going on preserving East Point. Um, it's, I think we have agreement, um, for a meeting next Wednesday. Uh, we were hoping for sooner, but, um, there were scheduled conflicts last week and, uh, their attorney, uh, one of their attorneys was on, I think, vacation this whole week, so. Um, next Tuesday, we'll hopefully be our, we'll have a meeting in Boston and, um, we'll have a meeting in Boston and, um, um, begin those discussions, um, in light of the, the, sort of the new dynamic based on the town meeting votes. Mark or Gene, do you have anything to add there, or Tony?
No. I'm good.
I'm good, Josh. I'd be interested in seeing how you do in those meetings.
Yeah, so I just, um, for people's information, um, in order to have these conversations, obviously, we can't have a, uh, a quorum of selectmen, so that limits it to one selectman. Um, over the past few years, it's been the chair, so that'll be me and Tony and, um, town council Jeff Blake will be the three people attending this first meeting. So I think that's the only news that I have, and it sounds like none of you others have anything more on East Point? So the next item is town administrator's report. What do you have for us, Tony?
Well, I want to talk, um, about, uh, the sewer break we had and the sewer project, but I also, before I get to that, I did want to recognize, um, the poll workers, uh, and volunteers who contribute in town meeting. Um. We, as mentioned on here a couple of times, we had a record number of, uh, registered voters at, at the town meeting at eleven hundred and five. Uh, so I did want to just recognize the folks who were, you know, dealing with them one-on-one, one-on-one, and there was a lot of folks, there was a lot of residents there, and uh, they did an amazing job. And I just wanted to recognize them personally, uh, Carol Nelson, Polly Anderson, Kim Carmody, Sherry April, Sue Edwards, Jen McCarthy, and Etta Maycheck. Uh, all of them, all of them worked directly with our clerk, uh, Diane Dumphy, who also did an amazing job. And, um, you know, we, I was speaking with Diane, uh, last week, and we were just talking about how smooth things went, and um, I asked her to give me a list of those, of those names so that we could, so I could publicly thank them for all the great work that they've done and, and that they did on our day. Uh, I do, so we did, we experienced the sewer break last week, um, on the Linway, it's on the sewer main. I, I know it sparked a lot of questions about where are we with our, uh, with our major sewer project? Um, what's amazing is we have had a sewer break in the first five days of June every year for the last three years. Uh, it's almost to the day, the same exact day. Uh, this one wasn't, um, wasn't too bad. I don't have, I don't have a price yet for how much, how much it ultimately cost us. Uh, but it was a fairly quick fix. Uh, it wasn't, it wasn't a major break, but, um, it was all contained within an existing, uh, manhole, uh, so we didn't have to, you know, excavate a, a large number of the, you know, a Y area of the street in order to get to the break. We were able to, um, get into that structure and make the repair pretty quickly. Um, we, we, uh, have spoken with DEP since then, and Zach and I have met with, um, Tom Simbro from Wright Pierce about our, where are we in our current, uh, process of the, of the sewer main project? I have a schedule to share. Uh, we've, you know, so we, we were reviewing the plans this week. Uh, those plans are going to DEP and DCR next week for their review. Uh, they do a technical, DEP always does a technical review, uh, of the project before, um, any sort of permitting. It actually requires DCR permitting because we're going to be in their roadway, so they'll be taking a look at it as well. And we'll be getting, uh, hopefully, we'll give them about a month to get comments back from them on our project, but we're at um, ninety-nine percent design, just waiting on their comments. We might have to make some changes. Uh, DCR's traffic plan, uh, we work directly with, a consultant that works directly with DCR on all their traffic plans, so we're pretty confident where we are with that. Um, but DCR does, the state would prefer us to wait until the fall, uh, to avoid the summer traffic issues for construction. Um, so our hope is to advertise the bid on this project in August, right, August first. Uh, we should receive bids and award by the end of August. We use September to, um, execute a contract. And, you know, by the end of September, we're, we should be installing a bypass, a temporary bypass pipe. Uh, once that's in, uh, hopefully by the beginning of October, we'll be, that's when the slip line, uh, project will begin, which will take a few months, and hopefully it will be done by mid-December. And then we'll come back in the spring and do a permanent pavement restoration after the, after the plow season. Um. I have, let's see. We just had a picture up of what we're, what we're going to be seeing. So this is a picture, this is a picture of what, of what our pipe was going to look like once the slip line comes in. Uh, this is, this, if you can see my mouse here on the, on the far left and far right is the host pipe, which is our, you know, what our existing pipe would look like. And what they take is an eighteen-inch, um, plastic pipe, they shrink it down in size and stretch it, and they pull it and push it through the existing host pipe, and then it, it expands on its own and essentially becomes the new pipe. Um, there's a few different, you know, connections and, uh, of this nature, different manholes throughout, um, different bends of the pipe throughout the, throughout the system from the rotary to Linway, and, um, this is, this is basically a picture of what we'll be looking at. You know, again, this pipe, this project, you know, this has, this plastic has a fifty-year lifespan on it. And I have a, I have a, uh, I have a copy of. You know, I have a copy of our plan, a copy of the plan, you know, in my office here, that any of the voters left and want to come and take a look at. I have copies here in the town hall, um. This is, it should be a fairly simple, you know, uh, plug-and-play job for, for a contractor because of all the work that Wright Pierce has done so far on it, so. So, bottom line is, we, our hope is to advertise, uh, in August and be breaking ground in September.
I'm telling you, my only question is, um, so this, uh, slip landing will be what part of the pipe?
It's from the rotary to the treatment plant. We have, we've also, we ran into a, a little bit of an issue as we talked about at the last meeting with the borrowing, and that factors into our timeline, uh, in the sense that you have to have your, you have to have the borrowing, the money in place before you can award a contract. Uh, but I'm, I'm actually, it's already been filed with, at this, as a home rule petition at the State House. I'm speaking with the governor's office tomorrow, uh. It's, it sounds like from speaking with Senator Creighton's office that that should move through the legislative process very quickly and not interfere with the schedule I just presented.
So fingers crossed until, uh, until September. Um, just a reminder for everybody, um, the funding for this project was approved at the reduced scale September fifteenth, twenty twenty town meeting, so, um, that spending is authorized by the voters.
Uh, so that's what I have right now. That's what I have right now. Uh, we are, tomorrow, uh, myself, police, fire, DPW, emergency management are meeting with the key players from the wall that heals. Uh, we are in, you know, we're going to be uh, meeting with them pretty regularly from now until July fourteenth to make sure that we're fully prepared for that event. Uh, and as we mentioned earlier in tonight's meeting, we have a number of other things going on here at the town hall with as far as, um, um, employment, uh, employment, uh, opportunities, trying to get people hired, um, and uh, you know, with our impending retirements at the end of the month. Um, and we're just, you know, we're dealing with, with, uh, summer schedule of maintenance with DPW and trying to get a number of the projects that were approved at last town meeting, um, up and, up and ready to go. Uh, we also have uh, Comcast contract is up for renewal in July, uh. Dan and I will be, actually, Dan, do you want to take that for a second?
I do. Um, it is up in, uh, Jul, on July ninth, actually, a month from today. And this is Comcast, not Verizon. Verizon is still good until the end of the year, so we should expect to hear from them around, uh, August with a letter. But we got a letter from Comcast a while back, uh, wanting to renew, obviously, their license, because it's essentially a franchisee. And we need to have a hearing in that regard, and that's one of the things I think Tony was thinking about when he said we're going to need to meet again early July. Um, so it's a hearing that's to make sure that the residents have a chance to pipe in on issues they might have with Comcast. Um, and there are some things we need to sort of check boxes for. And, uh, and then if, if that hearing goes well, and I'm sure it will, we'll, um, we'll go ahead and you guys would vote to execute the contract, we'd execute it, and then make a public statement and send a letter to the state, um, and then that'll be it for that. But before that can happen, we have to do a little bit of negotiation with Comcast. To that end, I've reached out to the representative, hopefully hear from them very soon. But I really don't think there's going to be much to talk about because a lot of this stuff is statutory-driven. Uh, I think two intangibles are going to be the paid contribution that they currently make at forty-five thousand per contract term. And, um, any sort of poll issues that might come up, but I, I think it'll be a pretty streamlined process, but we have to get, we have to get in this hearing now. That is a must. That's a, that's a, that's a regulatory requirement from the state. So that, and that should occur somewhere in early Ju, early July, late June, keeping in mind that the contract expires on the ninth.
Dan, um, if I recall correctly, isn't there two processes that the town could take? One's really sort of short-term and checking all the boxes, but one's a more long-term type of process, um, that you could take with this?
Well, this, this federal law requires a hearing only if we're going to deny the inner operation, but, but the state, the state require, the state, I can give you the actual site, two zero seven CMR three oh five three requires a hearing. Um, and again, I don't think it'll be very much, that what we do have to get is notice out, so we have to really set a date very soon, so we get the two-week notice into the line item, so we can check that box.
Okay.
Hey, uh, just another quick question related to, to technical uh, with, with cell phone reception. I've had a couple of people ask, and it's a question I have myself. Why do we have such a difficulty on the higher side of town with tel, cell phone reception? Cuts out almost immediately, let's say, from Wall Street up to the country club.
That's why we need to pass the Infrastructure Act. Straight out of the mouth.
No, I mean, it really is, it's, it's been that way for quite a while.
I know that, Tony, I know that when they first came in, um, they go through, Gene, they go through what is called, referred to as a propagation study. And basically, they, they set up at a high point in town and see where the weak spots are, where the, um, strengths are, where the tower should be, and the propagation studies in the hand, I mean, it was, I mean, the only place that they can put the tower is where it's at, um, currently. And you know, there are some places that are better than others, but there's not much more you can do at this point.
And it gets, I, I think, uh, vegetation and overgrowth has something to do with it, too.
Yeah, during, during the summer.
Running into with the police radio situation, too.
Yeah.
Well, it's not good.
No, it's not good to the United States. I mean, I, I can't believe it. I mean, I, you get the parts of this country that you can't get coverage. It's not, it's unacceptable. I mean, I've been to China, I've been to Africa, I've been to other places, and it's better, better coverage than I get up in Maine. Uh, and, you know, it's, it's crazy.
It is.
And we, the, the country needs to improve in that, for sure. But I get off the soapbox.
Uh, good rea, good reason to be on it.
Uh, anything else, Tony?
No, that's all, that's.
All right, yeah, just before we leave this, um, you know, thanks for mentioning all the people that helped out with the election, and um, they did a great job, and it, it got me thinking about, you know, all these different committees that people volunteer for, planning board and library trustees and Concom and zoning board of appeals. It's, it's incredible the, the devotion, um, you know, that our citizens put into helping this town run. It's, it's pretty amazing, so. Thanks to all of them, too.
And I just remind, just.
All right, I think.
I just want to remind folks again that, um, short of legislative action, our next, our next board of selectmen meeting will likely be under the old rules and will be in person here at the town hall.
That's right.
All right, we're getting the band back together. Um. All right, um, next up is Citizens Forum.
Josh, if I could jump in before we open it up, um, I deferred my opening comments, uh, I was hoping a few people would come on. And I'm not quite sure I see them unless they're on a telephone number. Um, but I got a call from a couple, um, residents, and they agreed that I share their names, Linda Jenkins and Jimmy Ward. Um, they were both interested in stepping up and, uh, seeing if there was a possibility to form a sort of a volunteer group in the hand of citizens that could help out with small projects around town. Um, and also maybe help out some of the seniors, um, some household chores and those types of things. Um, the, the reason for their concern was they really wanted to start focusing on, you know, what we have in common rather than our differences, um, in the sort of try to bring the community together, um, a little bit more. Uh, and I thought it was a great idea. I talked to the town administrator about this briefly today. And, um, I'd like to try to foster that sort of involvement. Um, they, they're willing to step up and you know, form a volunteer committee that will participate in these activities. Uh, Tony had some really good ideas about this. I think it has some, um, it's a merit, and it's certainly something we should look into, uh. A lot of small项目 projects around town, whether it's, you know, painting railings or, I mean, painting, um, painting the wharf, for example, where the community could get together and, and do that, um. Uh, so, yeah, I thi, I thought it was a great opportunity to take a look at this, and Tony, you had some even more ideas about this, so maybe you could share them.
Uh, we, we've been, you know, when I first came in a couple of years back, um, it was, it was something we talked about really doing last year, year number two, was ramping up, you know, public events, community events, things that bring the community together, and then we went through the opposite, uh, uh, scenario with the pandemic and had to keep everybody apart. Uh, so now that we're on the other side of that, and hopefully we continue to, um, to see that and not have a. Uh, so now that we're on the other side of that and hopefully we continue to, um, to see that and not have a, um, you know, a recurrence of that pandemic. Uh, we are starting to take a look at, you know, public events and what we can do this summer that can bring the community together. Uh, and it was coincidental that, uh, you called me, um, with that idea because I had just left committee, you know, um, talking with, um, Kristen Taylor and our new summer intern, Olivia Cook, um, about just that very thing. And the first thing we put, the, one of the number one things that we had Olivia start working on was a, um, what it would take for us to maybe do a farmer's market, uh, in town, you know, want, want every other weekend or something like that. Uh, we were looking at, um, you know, uh, other types of events that we could do like outdoor, um, outdoor movies for kids, um, different little, you know, types of community events that help bring the community together. So, um, I'd love to, I'd love to meet with, uh, Linda and, um, and Jim and, and, and Olivia together and Kristen and, and maybe Mark, if you could be there and, and we could do some brainstorming and then maybe see if, maybe the next step is to, uh, expand it, you know, and offer it up to other residents in town to see if they want to get involved. But I love the idea. Um, you know, I love, I love the idea of creating uh, not only, not only, you know, volunteer opportunities to give back to the community and especially like our seniors and the, and the residents, which we can involve council on aging, but, you know, having some, maybe, maybe creating some new events that are here to stay year after year. Um, I like it. I like the idea a lot. So.
And I'll, I'll talk to Linda and Jim tomorrow and perhaps we can schedule some meetings and we walk back to the board, um, about that.
Wonderful idea. I love it. And this year, you know, with, you know, we've, we're already off to such a great start, uh, with the event, uh, the May event that happened up at East Point. And then we have the wall that heals coming in July. Um, you know, so we already have like these two new events that brought a bunch of people together. So, um, we're in a good spot. I like it. I like the direction we're heading in.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. Very exciting. Okay, citizens forum. Uh, Gene, did you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
All right. Time for citizens forum. If we have anything in the chat, Tony?
Nothing in the chat. So if anybody, um, on Zoom wants to unmute themselves, please announce your name and address.
Going once?
Hi, uh, Brennan, Veronica Olmstead, Two Summer Street. I had a question of how, who do I contact in the town about getting a sailboat keel, which, um, is still on my property from a storm two years ago? Uh, I think that, that the time the DPW was going to come down with their front-end loader and remove it. It's about three hundred pounds.
Um, I thought, I'm sorry, Brennan, I thought we needed to remove it. Um, but I'll talk to, I'll talk to Zach. Uh, was there an issue with access?
Um, well, I think it was the tide schedule. Because, you know, it has to be low enough and it has to be during the daylight hours and on a weekday.
Didn't that, wasn't that removed by a private, didn't the owner of the boat hire a removal company to do that job?
No, that was the large boat. This was the sailboat that got blown in and then smashed on my rocks. This would have been the Tudor Beach side.
Okay. All right. I'll talk to the DPW.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. Uh, this is Tom Alessi at, uh, one fifty-five, uh, Nahut Road. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So, um, last you guys changed your fees on the garbage removal process. It used to be households. Now you, I own four units there. And, um, now you're charging me per unit. So I called the DPW and asked them several times to have the, uh, garbage picked up at, at Two Kennedy Court. They, they used to do it for many, many years and then all of a sudden you guys changed the contract and they, they stopped it. And, um, so I called the DPW at least five times. I called, um, your office, um, a couple of times. And I spoke to someone today, a woman. She told me to get on the Zoom call and, uh, speak to you guys directly. So they're saying that they can't get the big trucks down the road. Um, but they have smaller trucks and I, you, you have waste management that is coming up for a contract. And, and I have tenants that are taking their garbage and walking all the way down Kennedy Court to the, to Nahut Road with their garbage. And it's, it, it should not be that way. I mean, we, we should be able to compromise and say, say halfway down Kennedy Court where the truck can pull up and pick up the, the barrels. Instead of my tenants going all the way down to Nahut Road. And I, I like, I like to have some sort of solution to this.
Yeah, I wish Ed was still, hi, Tom, this is Tony. Uh, thank you for jumping on the call. Sorry, I mean, uh, sorry I missed you. Um, I wish Ed was still on the call. We do have smaller trucks that service some of the tighter roads in town in Bass Point area and Little Huron area. Uh, so I can definitely ask Ed if, uh, we could include Kennedy Court to that list.
Okay, that'd be great. I mean, it, it, you know, it'd be awesome because I don't mind paying a little bit more, but as long as I get the service for it, I don't really care.
No, it's, it's curbside, right? So it should come, it should come, uh, you shouldn't have to walk it all the way down the end of the street. Um, let me ask, when we talk to Ed, I don't see why we couldn't come up with a solution.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any, anybody else for citizens forum? I have to keep moving around to get good wifi here. Um, um, okay, with that, then, uh, we have no executive session this evening. So, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Jane, can't be I.
Mark, Tom and I.
Josh, Andrew, Mike. Thank you, everybody. Um, see you next time.
Thank you.
Good night.